Yes, sir. We're waiting on y'all to stop talking. The rest of you ready? All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for July 17th, 2023. If you would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we do give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the school system, the staff, and the community that supports us. We ask your continued guidance as we begin to enter into another year of school learning, to be with us, keep us safe, and pray that all of us work for the good of the school system. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens addressed to board, no one. Item number four is approval of the work session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second. Second by Mr. McAdger. All those in favor? Okay, all right. Motion carries five zero. All right, Dr. Williams, I'm turning it over to you for the items of information.
All right, first we're gonna start with goal one, which is student success. And I've asked Mr. McNair and Ms. Sheets to share some information with you. So they might have some slides or some things to share. One of them told me they had thirty minutes, but I think they were joking.
No, not thirty minutes. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glad to be back, ready for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Very excited, looking forward to it. I think we're gonna have a fantastic year. What I wanted to do is start off by talking a little bit about summer school, what happened over the summer, which is seems like it's just yesterday, and we're about to go back to school. But one of the things I wanted to share with you is kind of what programs we had going on, what things were happening in our schools for about three weeks, so three tough weeks of summer school for some of our kids. Again, our mission statement to graduate all students, prepare for college and careers, and educational excellence, and equity for all is what we're striving for when it comes to our student and their success. Our summer school twenty-two-three update, we, uh, was, participation was during the month of June through June the seventh through the twenty-ninth at all schools. We had about a hundred and twenty-one students. Subject and content areas, reading, math, and ELA for third through eighth grade, algebra, biology, US history, American Lit for ninth through twelve. Now, at the high school, we did have some kids taking world history and some of the other electives that they were trying to get credits for, but we didn't include them on this. Socio-emotional therapy groups, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we had a couple of those going on. So we were, we were looking at the fact that our kids are not getting services during the summer, during the school year. And I'll tell you a little bit about our capacity grant that I applied for and got us some money in to help our kids. So that was a good thing, and we're looking at expanding that at the beginning of the school year. So, uh, the two, we had two going daily at the high, at the middle, at the elementary school and one daily. And that was happening Monday through Thursday. So when the kids came in for the groups, um, they were able to do instructional math and reading if they were not in a group. So at the elementary, for instance, they had two sessions from eight o'clock to twelve. And so when they were not in a group, they were in a classroom with teachers. So worked very well for us. We had about twelve kids participate at the elementary school and about five at the middle school. So I wanted to get this thing started here as we move forward. The next data that I'm gonna show you is based on, I know this is kind of small, so I was trying to get it all in. Todd Grant Elementary, we had eighty students who were invited to summer school. We had seventy-five that attended. We had twenty-eight third graders, eighteen fourth, fourteen, eighteen fourth graders and twenty-nine fifth graders. Students had classes in math and ELA. Ms. DeBerry and Ms. Myers held socio-emotional groups with select students. As I mentioned earlier, students were able to work on summer reading activities and math when they weren't in their group session. So that worked out really well. This, according to Mr. Mitchell, summer retests went well. Fourth grade students were not required to retest, so, um, they were there, third, fourth, and fifth, but only the third and fifth grade kids were doing the retests for EOGs. Uh, the data that we see here is the data that we've gotten back from the state with our summer testing. I wanted to share with you guys that the current tests have been embargoed, and they will not be available until the end of July. So in August, we're gonna give you a grand update on how we did as a school system as far as our performance and where we stand moving into the next school, this school year. As you can see, third grade results for ELA, twenty-one students, still scored at level one, and seven students scored at level two, which is about twenty-five percent. So really didn't see a lot of gains there, but we wanted the kids to be exposed and get the, um, get the experience with the test again. The main thing is, is just the repetition. You know, in three weeks, you can't change over a year, but you can expose the kids to more and more of the content. So we're hoping to move, plus it helps us identify those students at the beginning of the year who are struggling that we're gonna be able to intervene with early on. Same thing with our fifth graders. We had seventeen of the twenty-four fifth graders retested. It was about seventy-one percent of those kids came back in for the test. Yeah, students, fif- ten students scored fifty-nine percent on level one, and seven students scored level two on, uh, that, about forty-one percent. Fifth grade, they were the only group that took, took the math. And so we had twenty-eight of thirty-five fifth graders that take, that's, take the math test, which is about eighty percent. Eighteen students scored level one again, and ten students scored level two. My goal, and I, I know Ms. Sheet's expectation is moving into the new school year, is to really get those scores up as far as our performance is concerned. Now, this, this does not represent the scores for our EOCs and EOGs overall. This is just that small segment of kids that we had in that we knew needed that extra instruction. And so as part of that, we retested them again, okay? Any questions about that with elementary school? All right. As you can see, when we moved down to the middle school, we moved up, our participation went down. We had thirty-three students attend at the middle school. About fourteen sixth graders, fourth, um, four seventh graders, and fifteen eighth graders. Students had the classes that I mentioned earlier with the reading, math, and ELA. Ms. DeBerry did groups with those students also. The EOG retests were completed with the eighth grade only. So when you look at the EOGs for eighth grade, because they're transitioning to high school, they were the only ones that retested. Fifteen of the fifteen eighth graders, we had a hundred percent participation with the ELA. Eighth grade results, twelve students scored level one again, and three students actually moved from level one to level two. So we had a twenty percent that did a little bit better out of the students that we tested. In math, fourteen of the fourteen fifth grade students were retested in math, a hundred percent. Eighth grade results, eleven students, again, at level one, and three students scored level two.
That's eighth grade, right?
Yes, eighth grade, and they were the only ones. These are our students that are going to the high school. So again, they needed that extra instruction as they moved to the high school. That gives our counselor, our teachers, information on identifying not only who those students are. I didn't put any names, but they, we do have their results. So we'll be able to identify those students and get the extra tutoring and instructional support that they'll need. So again...
Sometimes we also, um, ask these students to come back in order to be promoted.
Yeah, and that's another thing. You can't move on if you, if you failed and then you retest. Then there are meetings that take place with the parents that say, "Look, he didn't pass, so he has to come back." But if he makes an attempt, participates in summer school, then we can place the student in the next grade. Now, when they get to high school, the rubber meets the road, which means they have to earn the credit in order to move, move forward. So, uh, again, hopefully they're gonna have an opportunity. I think it's next week, Dr. Williams, in two weeks, our freshmen, they're gonna have an orientation where they come up to the high school and they're gonna walk their class for two hours. Mr. Willis, Ms. Popple will have an opportunity to talk to them about the rules and how to navigate a high school, unlike the middle school where you're kind of walking with your class there, you're kind of doing your own thing. So it's really to help them transition. Okay? McIntosh County Academy, uh, we had thirteen students attend for remediation, credit recovery, all grades, and, uh, ELC content areas. Student had recovered, had credit recovery classes in algebra one, biology, and, and the other US history and American Lit. Eight of the thirteen students who attended summer school recovered their credit, which is a good thing because by going to summer school, not only did they recover their credits, but they were able to get the credit based on their performance, a lot of times on the classes that they were taking. So taking the class again, even if they didn't score as high as they wanted to on the ELC, when you add, do the math on it, they were still able to get the credit. So that was a good thing. Most of the students were enrolled in ELA and world history. So even though we had students in algebra, biology, and the US history, some of them were still trying to get those extra credits too, which is, I thought was a good idea. Eighteen students retested in algebra one. Fourteen students scored level one, seventy-eight percent. We had four students move from beginning, beginner learner to developing, which is passing. When they get to developing, they're at the passing stage. Twelve students retested in biology. Ten students scored level one, and two students scored level two. We have one student remain at developing, and one student moved from beginner to, uh, developing. So again, as I mentioned earlier, one of the big things, challenges with summer school, since it's not all summer, is trying to get as much instruction in as we can in about two and a half weeks. US history and American Lit, six students retested in, in, in US history. We had three students that were still level one, and three students that moved up to level two. So we had three students move from beginner to learning. These were students who were part of that pass, earned their credit. Now unfortunately, with, uh, American Lit, uh, which requires, uh, multiple test days and things like that, with liter- with writing and being able to respond to prompts, we did not have any of the ti- kids that took the retest for the American Lit to pass at all. So again, with our focus on literacy moving into the twenty-three, twenty-four year, we're gonna make sure that we're, that becomes more of a priority for us. Okay? Any questions? Again, as I mentioned earlier, this is kind of like a microcosm of the, the whole group. It's just a summer period where we retested. It's not a whole school year. So, uh, the success rate for kids going through the summer school and actually earning the credit for the ones that did should be committed. So they did a great job. As I mentioned earlier, and this is my final remark, we did, uh, World War II forty-two thousand dollar capacity grant on May thirty-first. This is a grant that I had applied for because we had been talking about mental health and services. So the state had grants out there covering, uh, dyslexia. I think it was something on literacy, but we went after the therapeutic and psychological services. So we were able to contract with Behavior Matters right here and there and, uh, to provide services with us. Ms. DeBerry is a contractor with them. She's actually getting her license and everything through them. So that really helped with the familiarity with our students. They were able to come in, instead of taking weeks to build a relationship, she already had relationships with these kids. And so next week, I'm gonna be reporting our results for the, uh, I think it was eight or nine sessions that she had at each of the schools during the days that she was here. And, um, because the grant ends on September the thirtieth, we're gonna use some of that forty-two K to do groups after school and Saturday for our students who, and their parents. Again, we go through the formality of actually getting parent permission, talking about confidentiality and all that type of stuff. So everything is signed and made sure it's, it's legal, but at the same time, uh, we're making sure that we're able to provide the services. Now, for my peers, what I've been hearing is that we wish the state would allow us to extend the grant, at least through the end of the year. But they gave us until September the thirtieth. So we're gonna be, um, kind of reorganizing our grant to take advantage of the services. So we're out there looking for money and looking for resources, uh, to, to, to work with our kids. Okay? Any questions about anything? I know that was pretty fast, but I wanted to kind of give you guys a quick update.
Thank you so much.
No, sir. I don't have anything.
Thank you. Sounds like things are moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I, I'm excited about the grant because we, we, our biggest concern now with the grant is that we're gonna have more kids than we have counselors. So, um, Ms. Berry is already working full-time, so we're gonna have to manage that time with her to maybe have it only a couple of days as opposed to what we did before, which was every day during the summer time. So looking forward to it.
So that, that deadline, so that means we have to use that money before then?
So if we have, if we have services that we've paid for, and that includes transportation. So we've done assessments, we're gonna be able to pay for assessments, transportation, uh, materials, all of that. All we just need is the kids who are in crisis or having difficulty because of socio-emotional to participate.
Yes, sir. So if we don't use it before then, we lose it. Yep, okay.
Again, I'm looking for money, and you guys know that. I'm looking, I'm looking, like looking for Elmo or Emo, whoever. There you go, there you go. As, as I've said in previous meetings also, you remember Dr. Kavanaugh Chandler? He's still working with me, and I've, I've been in conversations with him also. So he hasn't gotten a final, um, feedback on the grant that he had applied for. But we're looking for that because we're still talking about a school-based health, uh, facility here in McIntosh that'll be provided for our students and staff. So that's still in the works, and I'll give you guys an update as soon as I get more information on that too. But again, the, the EOGs, EOCs, we will have those final scores after their, um...
It'll be back in August.
And it'll be the meeting in August. So we'll have a lot of data to show you. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Sheets?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'm gonna start talking to y'all about summer reading. So as you know, all three of our schools participate in summer reading, um, and that is to prevent any regression, that summer slide. We have a lot of choice offered with our summer reading assignments, especially at Todd Grant. And at the middle school this year, the books are available either online at the schools or our public library. Ms. Yoder, uh, worked with us to make sure that we have copies of the titles. And the assignments, I think the teachers did a really good job this year of making those assignments really well-known before the end of the year. And I was particularly proud of our fifth and sixth grade teachers and our eighth and ninth grade teachers for working together for the transitions. So like, for example, in sixth grade, their summer reading assignment was to read Hatchet, uh, which is a novel by Gary Paulson. And so our fifth grade teachers read the first few chapters with those kids to get them hooked in before the end of the summer and really went over that choice board, you know, and how to complete that and how to do those assignments. And then Ms. Pascoe, our eighth grade teacher, did the same thing for, um, Ms. Nix's ninth grade, uh, reading assignments. So they did a really good job. For Todd Grant, it's more of an incentive with an ice cream party and things like that. And then as it goes up, the middle school's trying to get the students ready for high school, so they've made it worth an assignment, like a whole, like a grade this year. And then the high school stakes get a little higher, so it's a grade. But that grade is important because if they have a zero in that grade, then they can't examine files. So, um, I have details on all the assignments. Do y'all have any questions or...? Nope, okay. All right. Next, um, the state of Georgia is giving out grants and we're calling for proposals for grants. And there is an opportunity grant where we had the opportunity to be awarded up to four thousand dollars. And they did it in areas like, um, world languages, social studies, science, math. But at the elementary school, you know, our focus is literacy and, and math, especially coming up this next year. So they wrote a grant, and they is Ms. Morris, Ms. Ricker, Ms. Gondia, and Ms. Gordon, wrote a grant, and of that four thousand dollars, they asked for three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, and they got three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Wow.
And they're going to be using it for manipulatives like these, um, not, not just these. This is an example of, of something that they would use in kindergarten to teach patterning, um, to teach, let's see. They, they tied it all to standards, so like sorting, place value, counting, measurement. In first grade, I just want to share this with you because I had never thought of such a thing. In first grade, they have, and this isn't the only thing they have in first grade, but it's called a number line clock, magnetic demonstration clock. And it helps students to see that a clock is simply a circular number line, and they can change it to tell time. So they can use it as a number line and then bend it, you know? So they don't have analog clocks very much anymore when that's a standard. So they got, uh, manipulatives for every grade level, uh, matching standards, just to help teach standards. And so that goes along with our Eureka curriculum because our Eureka, we use to teach standards, and these match our standards. Y'all have any questions on that?
Sounds good, buddy.
Next up, and this is where you can go ahead and show that slide. So this is what I'm most excited to share, not that slide, don't worry, and we won't get into the details of that slide. But I'm most excited to share, hm, yep, I've got it, thank you. Most excited to share, and you may have already heard through the grapevine, but Todd Grant Elementary School was awarded, uh, the Visible Learning Associate Level Certification, which is a huge, big deal, and I want to explain to you tonight what that means and why it is a big deal. So this is what is called the Hattie Donut. Don't worry, we're not getting into any details. But I just want you to look and see that it comprises a lot of things, okay? There's a lot of instructional things go into visible learning, but also things for students, the learner, their dispositions, their mindsets. It's, it's a very complex system, but very worthwhile system. So just keep that in mind. It'll, it'll help with the context. It's important to understand that visible learning is the gold standard of instruction for Georgia. So I just have this one little slide from the Georgia Department of Education. It's one of hundreds, which is one of hundreds of PowerPoint presentations that they've done where they are talking about teacher clarity, learning targets, learning intentions, success criteria, visible learning. So it's what Georgia schools are expected to do, um, and I'm very proud of Todd Grant. So it's important for you to understand that. So even when we were at Gale last week, I guess it was, when I've been going to the breakout sessions, we were always talking about visible learning. Something was mentioned with visible learning. So it is that expectation. So it's nice to know that. Congratulations to Todd Grant. This is their certification. They get to use this logo on everything, but it's more than the logo. There are three tiers of certification. So we got the first tier. That's the associate school. We can carry that for two years. The next one would be partner school, and then the last one is what's called a certified school. Only three schools in the state of Georgia have ever gotten a certified school, and only a handful more than that have gotten associate school. So we are in a really elite group. Um, so that's nice to know. I want you to understand what we did to be awarded this, because they're not just handing out these awards. So we had to apply, but there were things that we had to do. So we had to participate in specific professional learning, professional learning that would help us to make these sustainable and systematic changes. They helped us do things that were necessary for the application for our case study. We submitted a fifty-page application that contained lots of data and proof of things. So I won't go into major detail, but just something like our dispositions. So you know we're the Todd Grant Tigers, right? So STRIPES is our acronym for our student dispositions, because it's important that students know what good learners are. So they set goals, that's the first test. Teamwork, reflective, inquisitive, persistent, engaged, seeks feedback, and asks for feedback. Those are all things we want our students to see themselves as and start doing. So we did what's called baseline data, and we asked students what good learners were. Then we did some work with the dispositions to try to teach them about dispositions and all that, and then we took more data. It's things like that we had to put in the study, so just FYI. Our students, when our baseline data, fourteen percent of them could tell you what a good learner was without mixing them with behaviors. But after a few months, fifty percent of them could tell you that's a big gain. So that's good. But they want to see something from that Hattie Donut I showed you earlier. They want to see work in, in a lot of different areas. So we did work in a lot of areas, and we provided not just charts and described it, but we provided videos of teachers and, and pictures and all kinds of stuff. So it was, it was very impactful. They, they also had to send someone out to our school, and they talked with our, our leadership team. They went into classrooms and did observations. They talked to students. And then they gave us a very detailed report of the things that we were doing well and the things that we could improve on. And it really matched with everything that the faculty thought, because the faculty had to take a survey, and it, it matched up perfectly. So that was good. So we had to do that. And then last but not least, they want to see an improvement on achievement. So they say, "Okay, great. You can implement visible learning and all these ideals and make gains and these practices, but are your students improving?" So we had to prove that. So then what happens, once we put together this big report, it goes to this global team, um, and John Hattie himself, the father of visible learning, gets to look and see if we get to be awarded, and we, we were. This, I'm not gonna, don't worry, I'm not gonna go over all these, but these are some bulletin boards of our dispositions. This is some PL. You can see back to the masks, um, that we held with our teachers about learning targets and success criteria. We even have book study where the middle school, you can see Amy Hewlett there, um, started to get involved. This is where, you know, students started rating themselves on the success criteria so that they can see how well they're learning. Level three is good. It's, "I got it. I'm not ready to teach it to others, but I do understand it," right? Um, and then this one's a level two, I won't, we won't spend any time. This is proof of students giving each other feedback. It's good for them to be able to talk about their learning and to talk about their learning with each other. More work with learning targets and success criteria, more work with students. See there, they're rating themselves and having to prove that they know what they know. This is them setting goals. And even the little ones, look, they're little goals. They know where they are, and it's cute. Map goals, sight word goals, that's our learning pit. The students now see mistakes as part of the learning process. So when they make a mistake, "That's okay. I'm gonna get it. I'm just in the pit right now, but I'm gonna come out." You know, so they, they understand. And really, some of the best, the stuff that I'm most proud of is our teachers. Our teachers are leading some of this PL. They should be. They are awesome. And so, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm really proud of Todd Grant. So what happened was, we were awarded at the annual visible learning conference. Uh, we didn't get to go, we could have gone, but it conflicted with Gale, and there were some other conflicts, so we didn't go. But we were awarded, and so right there, it's hard to see. Someone sent me this picture, but you can see they projected our Todd Grant Tigers stripes. You see the rafters and maybe the people's heads there. And people, I was told, were taking pictures of our dispositions so they could take it back to their schools. And you can see right there, they're telling, "Look at Todd Grant. Look at all the great things Todd Grant did." And they gave examples of some of our teachers' work that we were doing with kids. They showed a video. It was a really big deal. I had people, um, messaging me, emailing me, posting on Facebook. They were just like, "Look at you, Todd Grant. This is amazing." So I'm really, really proud of them. John Hattie himself is gonna be at GACIS this year. So for the past three years, GACIS is the Georgia Curriculum Convention that we all go to, administrators. And for the past three, at least three years, but now for the fourth year in a row, Corwin, people from visible learning, they're the keynote speakers. We get to get our award in front of all the administrators in Georgia. So it's like, we are the example, yeah. We are the example school. So I, I'm really proud of that. And you know, it's kind of like with a Super Bowl team, you know, they get the Super Bowl ring, and that's great. You get bragging rights, that's great. But what does it really mean? Super Bowl teams good at football. We're good at instructing, and we're getting even better, and we're gonna go farther. Y'all, we went from a promise school on a needs improvement list to a visible learning award school. I'm proud of Todd Grant.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes. Do y'all have any questions about that? Because I could stay all night. I'm here all night. All right, thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelly.
And that leads right into the next thing on advancing achievement recognition. Last week at Gale, um, Ms. Rouse, Mr. Mitchell, and Ms. Morris all went up to accept our award for being recognized. We actually came off that federal identification list into twenty-twenty-two, so they were, they were finally recognized for that, I guess is a good way. Sometimes the state, they, they take you off, but they never give you any accolades for that, but that was what they did. So we were excited to have that. All right, then under goal two for organizational effectiveness, I have a copy of the award we got from Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts that the McIntosh County Board of Education was awarded, got the Award of Distinction for Excellent Financial Reporting. Thank you.
Tammy, Ms. Tammy. All on her.
Then we have, your next sheet of paper is just the Sick Leave Bank Annual Report. You will see that twenty-five days were used. Uh, one employee used five, one employee used twenty. Uh, one employee used five, one employee used 20. So, this, that's FYI. Uh, the next one is the Coastal Plains MOU. Coastal Plains has been our night school program, as you are aware. And Georgia DOE, based on legislative action, is changing their status. So they are no longer, they no longer will be considered a charter school. They are now an LEA, just like we are. They will earn FTEs, just like we do. Um, so that throws a wrench in, of course, everything that we've been doing. So all of our students that were there as of June the 30th are grandfathered in. Any students that we send after the fact to complete like their diploma there, we will send FTE money with them as well. So if I go there and I tell, I'm a student at MCA and I move to the completion program and I take three classes, whatever those three weights are for FTE, McIntosh County will have to pay Coastal Plains. So, um, there are stipulations for who can even go there. Um, they have to be 18, their cohort has to, you know, for them to enroll by themselves, their cohort already has to graduate, things like that. Um, if they come out, I'm probably going to mess this up, but if they come out of school, they didn't graduate from us, they have to wait a certain amount of time before they can actually go and enroll in Coastal Plains. So we've already tried to be proactive. Um, we've already started some discussion here about some things that maybe we could do ourselves to help with this because I really don't want to send our FTE money to other people. So as that continues, uh, Mr. Massa, Mr. McNair, Mr. Willis, and Ms. McLean, and I've had some really good discussions already. So I'll share that with you as we get some things in place and kind of talk about what we might want to do. So. But for this year, we do need to sign the MOU, approve it and sign it, we can prove it through, but we need to sign that to continue the kids that are there, the students that are down there. And Tammy, I think it's down to you.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, if you return to page two, the general operating account.
Hey Tammy, let me say something. On the, online, you have the full report and then I printed you the summaries. I mean, I printed the 20 something pages, but they have the whole 100 and something on the, online, so if they want to look at that.
Okay. So on page two, the general operating account, which again, the month was 3.2 million. We had receipts of 1.7 million and disbursements of 3.2 million, leaving us with a remaining balance at June 30th of 1.8 million in the general operating account. Onto page 30, revenues, though the school year is 100% complete. And, um, just want to hit a couple of highlights here. Um, taxes, we have received 94% of the net levy of 8.2 million, uh, period to date. Don't expect we'll see a whole lot more come in, but I will continue to approve receipts through August 31st. Um, we have collected acquired year taxes of almost 600,000. Um, so that gave us collections of actually 113% of our budget, which is about a million dollars over what we budgeted for taxes. Um, we also have on here on the federal revenues, that is our e-rate revenue and the wildlife refuge money. So we don't budget for the wildlife refuge because we never know what it's going to be, but it came in at 105,000 this year. So it's pretty good there. And finally, the total revenues, um, after I backed out the 3.5 million transfers to get it out of the general fund, we ended up with 17.5 million, which is 109% over and above the 16 million of the budget for revenues. And you know, some of that is going to include things like the state health increases that we, state things that we, you know, didn't budget for, as well as these other items that I talked about. Um, on to expenditures. Ending expenditures, after I backed out the 3.5 million in the, um, transfers in and out, we have 16.3 million of general fund expenditures, which is actually 105% of the 15 million that we had budgeted. But again, just like the revenues, we had unbudgeted things. We had the state health, which is about, we know was over $300,000. Um, we also transferred a million, an extra million dollars into the local project fund that we did not budget for. And we had four employees that we had to pay off vacation for, that we don't budget for that. And of course, the superintendent fired up 200,000 as well. Questions on the revenues or the expenditures? Okay, page 38, fund balance. We, um, have 3.7 million in the general fund fund balance. And like I said, pretty much everything in hand, you know, most of that, some straggling invoices and some tax, tax revenue accruals, but that's probably pretty close to where we're going to end up for the year. Which is, if you look at the beginning, July 1, it was 2.6. So we actually got an increase in general fund fund balance of a million dollars. So we're going to avoid this. Okay, on to page 145, she's a school nutrition. She began the month with 397,000. She had receipts of 126,000, expenditures of 81,000, leaving a cash balance of 443,000 in the school nutrition account. Page 153, school nutrition fund balance, uh, not fund balance, it's closing out at 379,000. On to page 155, the money market account. Uh, we transferred out a million dollars to the local projects account. And we, at June 30th, have just over 3 million in the money market account. East loss projects account, page 157, 489,000 at June 30th. Page 159, the local projects account. We began the month with 488,000. We have a million dollar transfer in from the money market and a million dollar transfer in from the general fund. And 257,000 in expenditures, leaving us with 2.23 million in the local projects account.
So were we completely, have we completely paid for the new kitchen? I mean, the new cafeteria?
Yes, the final payment included in that balance. And finally, 162, the Georgia One Fund. We have, um, 11,000 in interest for the month of June. We had East loss receipts of 172,000, which is 12.3% over June of last year. Um, loss receipts, uh, leaving us with 2.8 million in the West, in the Georgia One Fund account.
I don't think we've ever had more than 172,000, have we?
Uh, we had 181,000 in January. That's the highest I've ever seen.
Wow.
Are there any questions over there?
Thank you.
In discussion of the minutes from our previous meetings, those are in your packet as well. If help is not here, but I can make notes. No questions?
Yeah, just read over them and let Dr. Williams know if there's, if you see any issues.
And then facilities and operations, Mr. Massa, he's got some pictures for y'all, probably some videos if I know him well.
No, just did, just did pictures today.
The whole time I was on vacation, I got videos updates, I loved them.
All right, great evening, board. We've had a very productive summer finishing up some of our, um, projects that we've had ongoing. Want to start off with McIntosh County Academy's security wall. It's, um, done. It was a, a, I think, a great look. It's, um, just what we, um, anticipated. It looks great. It's in operation. The only thing left to do is we've got just a few little, um, hookups to do to get the doors to automatically unlock. That, that's scheduled to happen, so that'll be ready to go for our, um, next year. So it's really exciting that you can see both in and out. There's a door on the side that comes in, so we're really secure. The last step to that, after the doors, we will get the film on that door so that, um, it's shatterproof. And, um, we've really transformed that entrance in a classy way, in my opinion. It doesn't, um, at all affect the looks of the school and it only makes it more secure. So that's, um, a, a great start for us. Our next picture is going to be of the McIntosh County Academy football field. As you know, that we had sod put on it after a bunch of rain delays. As you can see, wow, it looks beautiful. It's still growing in those three little white spots that you see in the, at the far end is, we had to raise some sprinklers and that's just sand that will grow in. It's already at a place that tomorrow is going to be a huge football camp with a lot of schools here and they're going to actually be able to use the field pending the weather and how wet it is.
The new field?
It, it's ready.
Put it to test.
We're putting it to the test. It's, um, seven on seven, it's only 14 kids on it in June. It's not going to be a full, full-on practice or anything. And we are going to manage it whether the, um, how soft it is. But man, it looks great. It was anticipated, um, and here it is. So that, that's, that's a, a real prize right there. As you can see, our whole facility is green, it's looking great. Uh, Mr. Mixon's doing an awesome job. Coach Warren is showing great leadership and making sure that everything's good in there. So we're excited about it. We will be asking the city to help us with some, um, leftover sod that was not able to be used. And we'll have to move some big barrels, or big balls of it, so we would appreciate that. Next, which I'm really excited about is our Oak Grove demolition. Demolition is complete and now you can actually see the road, or see the front of the school from the road. And, um, boy, it's been a transformation. I was really surprised when I asked around, what do you think? And there was a lot of people that had some nostalgia that the old school and some of the, um, it being there. But they always come around and say, well, we've got the opening of the school. The next steps on that is going to be, um, we're going to re, resurface the side of the school, put an awning on it of the Oak Grove section. And, um, then I envisioned from the stairs, a kind of a winding path out to that parking lot. And then, um, you see where the old awning is, right down the building, so for the handicapped access. But you'll be able to do walk up and you can picture some plants and a little winding right up to the front office. So, um, we've got an estimate coming to complete the irrigation. We, um, pre-planned that. There's hookups already ready to continue the irrigation right down and, um, hydro seed that area too. So that job, it has come along amazingly and I think that it's going to transform the, the middle school, um, front book.
Are we going to use the extra sod every year?
It was something that, you know, with that sod, it's not really, the way you mow it and the way we couldn't move it, it's, it's turf. It's a little different than what we want out there is some just regular grass. And, um, we only had a very small window to put that sod down. You've got to have it laid in 48 hours and we didn't have the equipment to move it. They just, it was just extra that came off the field. We would have loved to have been able to move. We did cut some of it off and we, we plugged as much area as we could, but we weren't able to salvage a lot of it. It's just not, um, something that you, that we have the equipment to roll out. I had the same thought and I was hoping, but it wouldn't match the whole grass that we've had in there, having different stuff. So, um, we're going to have to sacrifice that. So those are the major projects that, uh, we've had hanging out there where they're coming to a closure. If you'll drive by the front entrance of our Board of Education, you'll see that those are new sign there, um, indicating where we are. I think it's really nice up in the rafters up there, that's great.
That was installed today.
Today.
Where is this?
Right here outside the front door.
In the, the metal rafters above the awning of the school. Now it says McIntosh County Board of Education with our seal in it. And, uh, really distinct because sometimes people wonder when they pull in, um, where's Todd Grant and where's the board office? There's no mistaking it now. So I think that was a, a great addition. And then last but not least, we've gotten, they've come out and measured everything and they're ordering the parts for the MCA sign. So, um, we'll have a digital sign in front of MCA very shortly. And, um, we're excited about that. It's going to be video capable. We'll be able to show highlight clips and, um, current weather, current, um, conditions. So it's going to be a really nice sign for our MCA. Any questions on facilities? All right. The next, we have COVID update. I'm pleased to say like that we don't have any COVID, um, cases currently. We had one this summer, but, uh, right now we're COVID free. I, I always say, and I, I won't, um, stop, is that even though COVID's over, our general health safety protocols are in place, that we are encouraging hand washing, we're encouraging just being safe and, um, making sure that we don't spread any kind of sickness. And, um, hopefully that's going to continue on, we're going to keep emphasizing it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is personnel, which we will discuss in executive session. And then community engagement, just an update on some meetings that have been held. Um, I met with communities and schools. We hired their person that was working at the high school, what the school system hired that, Ms. Torres. So they are searching for us, a new CIS, um, personnel to put at the high school. Um, I met with the Boys and Girls Club and I have agreed to serve on their Board of Directors. I've met with the YMCA, both local and regional managers. Um, attended my first chamber meeting. I've also met with Kat and, um, Amy Spinks, who is going to serve as the chair this year. So I met with both of those ladies to talk about some ideas they had. They really want to work on bringing a youth development program into our high school. So I've reached out to some, um, chamber folks that I know in other areas and gotten them some information, sent all that to them today. So we're going to be working on that. And then I had a really good meeting with Mr. Giraffin from the Industrial Development Authority. And, um, he's gonna, he's going to work with us to help us update our brochure and do some things that will help him. So that's it for my report.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is executive session for personnel. Can I have a motion? A motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor?
Aye, ma'am.
I was waiting. Motion carries five zero. We'll return.
Yes.
Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Can I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Mr. McIver, all those in favor?
Aye, ma'am.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald.
Second.
Second by Mr. Strickles. All those in favor?
Aye, ma'am.
Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, any board comments?
Madam Chair, I don't have anything. Congratulations, Todd Grant.
Yep, got it going on.
Visual learning, way to go.
That's it.
See y'all, see y'all Thursday.
Yep, Thursday night.
Double dip this week.
All right, we adjourn.